Three minutes, three minutes.
The school is out.
We have a terrible meeting today.
And, nobody is happier than the teachers right now.
I know.
At least, yeah, it's in the way of writing, I know.
Yeah.
And especially up against this thing.
Yeah.
It keeps coming and this is all I keep getting.
Yeah, no, that's the case.
Is something locked?
So, probably. No, it's because I run all the time.
One minute, one minute.
The School Board of the Duval County School District has now convened in its regular monthly meeting. To everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. The vision statement of the Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or a career in life." The mission statement of the Duval County School Board is, "To provide educational excellence in every school and every classroom for every student, every day." The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel, appointments, and other business items that require vote of the board. The management and day-to-date operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the July 2nd, 2019 School Board meeting will be held on June 19, 2019, at nine o'clock a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comments portion of the board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Our opening message for today will be given by Rebecca Peterson from Rice Church, and I invite the board to stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, thank you so much for having me here tonight, and I just want you to know we're so grateful for everything that you do to impact our students, to impact our community. I just want to tell you how grateful we are that we have the opportunity to partner with our local schools. We consider it our responsibility to partner with our community to make an impact in the students in our community. It's not something that we take lightly, we put great effort, great resources into it because we believe in the students, we believe in the teachers, we believe in the faculty, we believe in everything that you're doing because we believe in the next generation. We believe that they're going to make an impact on our city, and we do this two reasons. One, because we believe that we're supposed to be servants. We believe Jesus was a great example of being a servant, so we want to serve others. And secondly, we do this because we love people, and we think people are so important, and we want to value them, and we want to extend love and encouragement to them. I think that encouragement goes a long way. I don't know what your beliefs are in God, I'm not here to push an agenda on you, and certainly that's not what we do when we step into our schools. We're not there to push an agenda, we are there to bring an encouraging word because we think that encouragement and kindness can go a long ways. Sometimes just speaking an encouraging word, encouraging action over someone, can just help you persevere when the days get long. So, for everything that you do, things that you do that might seem unseen or unappreciated, we want you to know that we appreciate you, we value you, we honor you, we thank you for everything that you're doing to better our students and to better our community. So, thank you so much for letting me be here tonight, and I hope it's okay if I pray over us tonight before we do the pledge. God, thank you so much for every single person in this room, thank you for the impact they're making on our students and on our teachers and on our community. It's a big deal, God, and we honor them, we honor them for everything that they're doing to teach this next generation of leaders in our city. And so, I just pray blessings on them tonight, I pray for wisdom as they make the best choices possible for our community and for our students, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we will have Venetia Elementary Principal Monique Chapman present. You can come forward now, this is, and we're member Joyce's district, district six.
Good evening. I am Monique Chapman, Principal of Venetia Elementary, and from my staff, I have our office staff, Ms. Juliet Hill, and an active parent, and we have Ms. Catherine Cachore, which is our Military Family Life Counselor. If someone was to ask me about Venetia Elementary, I will tell them, "Our formula for success is healthy bodies, healthy minds, and a healthy dose of academics." Our special focus on the medical arts gives students an early start toward healthy lives. We have an important neighbor in the Jacksonville Naval Air Station. We teach our children, earn their support through a special relationship, we open the door to all of our parents, creating a family atmosphere that translates into high expectations and a safe place for every student. For our Medical Arts Magnet, we focus on the medical arts standards each week with the integration of the health and fitness aspect. We have a special program called Small Bites where students learn important healthy foods, ingredients, and portions coupled with making a healthy snack that ranges from lemon lime soda made with sparkling water, trail mixes, and fruit kebabs. We have a special partnership with Orange Park Medical Center. The Community Relations Manager is a part of our School Advisory Committee, and she arranges for our fifth grade students to come each year on a field trip, and they get to experience the robotics program and learn about the various medical careers. We also have a Pittsco Science Lab that provides engaging, hands-on teamwork collaborative education for our students in the science, arts, integration, as well as engineering and math application. The students work on hands-on projects and missions that appeals to all types of learners. They combine structured and guided inquiry and student-centered technology in that science lab. Next, we have two of my students, Brianna Hill and Jamal Rice, and they are part of our Anchored for Life Comfort Crew, and they're going to explain this program.
We are proud to be part of the Anchored for Life team at our school and Anchored for Life. We help students who are experiencing transitions, and we also do things to help our community.
One of the things that Anchored for Life does every year is a community service project. This year, we collected supplies to donate to the animals at the Humane Society. We also wrote cards and letters to local WWII veterans during the holidays.
Another thing that Anchored for Life does every week is support students in transition. When new students come to the school, we help them feel comfortable and show them around. When students have a parent who's deploying or their family is moving away, we give them a kit to help. Every kit includes a comfort item, a journal, a DVD, and a family guidebook. And here's another thing, this is Mr. Cuzzi. He has a little hat, some goggles, and a scarf.
Anchored for Life is about making every student feel welcomed and cared about. It is also about connecting with the community. We are, we are proud to have Anchored for Life program at our school.
They're awesome.
We were awarded a $500,000 Department of Defense Grant in the year of 2015-16, and it is shared with Finnegan Elementary. And the grant allows for a full-time licensed mental health counselor that's shared between the two schools. We receive services two days a week for our students based on the military percentage. Additionally, with the funds for the grant, we host an annual Purple Ball where we honor our military kids and families. We hold quarterly positive behavior incentive stores where students can spend their Viking bucks earned, as well as provide math tutoring to all of our students. We were also able to purchase the Calm Classroom Program to help manage student stress as well as focus in the classroom. Along with all of these activities, programs, and opportunities that are embedded throughout the school year, we offer strong instructional practices that meet the needs of students through differentiated instruction, student ownership, and higher-order thinking activities to encourage collaborative problem solving. It is my top priority to provide students with a safe and effective learning environment and that is full of rich experiences. I am honored to be the Principal of Venetia Elementary School of the Medical Arts, and I am grateful for the community's support, and I want to thank everyone for letting me share about Venetia Elementary today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board Member Joyce, I know that you are proud of this elementary school in your district. Would you like to say anything before we move on with words, recognitions?
Yes, being, my son's in the military, he's an officer in the Air Force, and working at Joseph Stow Military Academy of Leadership. When I walked in, when I was visiting and met Ms. Chapman, and she showed me around the school, I was blown away by the amount of military students who attend this school and how they work with these students and comfort them and just meet their needs. And so, the, all the hard work that you do, Ms. Chapman, I appreciate that, and Ortega, Rivers, I mean, Ortega-Venetia, that whole area is just blessed to have you as the principal there.
Thank you. I would now like to ask Superintendent Dr. Diana Green and Board Member Joyce to come down front for presentation of certificates.
Ask her colleagues to describe her, and you'll hear words like leader and advocate. It's for these character traits and many more that we begin by recognizing our School Social Worker of the Year, Carla Flowers. Our school social workers have been referred to as the silent warriors of the school system. Working throughout our traditional and alternative schools and in homeless and foster care centers, school social workers help provide critical support in areas that can impede a student's education. That can range from a lack of clothing or school supplies, to chronic absenteeism, to traumatic life events, and much more. When it comes to why Flowers received this year's top honor, we're told it's because of her constant contributions to the district's program and to the field of social work. Flowers assumes a leadership role with her colleagues, she manages and organizes the school social work student internship program, she supports and trains new school social workers, she advocates for students and families, she oversees several committees, and finally, she is just happy to help anyone in need. Here this evening to help honor Flowers are Director of School Behavioral Health Katrina Taylor and Supervisor of School Student Services Laura Chiarello. Please help us congratulate Carla Flowers, Team Duval's School Social Worker of the Year. There are just three of less than 300 schools in the entire country to receive this honor. We now celebrate Jacksonville Beach Elementary, Chimney Lakes Elementary, and Stanton College Preparatory for earning National Merit Awards for Magnet Schools of America. To receive a National Merit Award, each of these schools had to demonstrate success in high academic standards, school diversity, specialized curricula and instruction, family engagement, and community partnerships. Each school went through an in-depth review process and was judged by a panel of educators. In all 288 schools in 20 states were recognized, distinctions that MSA leaders say go to schools that quote embody "the best in public education." This year, Jacksonville Beach Elementary's Gifted and Academically Talented Program received MSA's Top Tier Award as a Magnet School of Excellence. Joining us from that school are Principal Cameron Mattingly, Assistant Principal Edna Chapman, Gifted Lead Tracy Chin, and third-grade Math and Science Teacher of the Gifted Joanna Culpe. Chimney Lakes International Studies Program and Stanton's College Preparatory Programs were both honored as Magnet Schools of Distinction. With us from Chimney Lakes are Principal Missy Metz, Reading Coach Sarah Barrell, Math Interventionist Karen Cantwell, and second-grade teacher Christina Enton. And from Stanton, Principal Nogonkuma Majova Siani, Assistant Principals Michael Kerr, Matt Hemphill, and Sonia Romming. All three were recently recognized in a national ceremony in Baltimore in April, which is where they got their plaques from, and they were also recognized in front of their peers at a recent principals' meeting in May. So, please help us congratulate these three schools for these National Merit Awards. It's the kind of next-level instruction leaders say would not have been possible without the generous support of our community. For our final presentation, we welcome the principal and staff of Mandarin Oaks Elementary School, and they are here to be presented with a generous $10,000 check from Walmart. This donation comes as a result of a vision to bring the National Project Lead the Way Program to Mandarin Oaks Elementary School. This innovative STEM-based program challenges students through interactive and hands-on projects in areas like robotics, animation, the human body, and more. Mandarin Oaks leaders knew bringing a program like this to the school would come at a price, one they were willing to cover through fundraising. It was through these efforts that the school connected with Walmart. Mandarin Oaks Principal Lee Butterfield says that Walmart has shown a genuine interest in seeing this program flourish, and the school looks forward to this partnership. Walmart's donation ensures that teachers are trained and that Project Lead the Way is fully funded going into this next school year. This comes in addition to donations and support from the PTA, parents, and also from Representative Jason Fisher. Joining us tonight from Mandarin Oaks Elementary are Principal Lee Butterfield, Assistant Principals Rachel Fettner and Daryl Edmonds, and Teacher Leaders Emma Dubisky, Anna Aden-Mattin, Alyssa Young, Alicia Pitts, Sez Henaroso, and Bree Cousins. And also, from Walmart, is the Director of Public Affairs from the state of Florida, Monitia Brown, and several representatives from the Walmart on Shops Lane, which is the partner of the elementary school. So, please help us thank Walmart for the substantial investment in the Project Lead the Way Program at Mandarin Oaks Elementary. This concludes this evening's presentations.
Approval of the June 4, 2019 Agenda. The Duval County School Board approved the June 4, 2019 Agenda, as submitted on May 28, 2019. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. It was moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Anderson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you've passed the seven zero. The graduation ceremonies were a great way to end the school year and to end the month of May. I'm always impressed by the number of students who earn certifications that lead to the workforce, as well as students who graduate with college credit, and most impressed by those who earn their AA or AS degree prior to receiving their high school diploma. This month, the board will participate in Master Board Training. This is an opportunity to do some team building and participate in professional development. Our board dares to have courageous conversations, and while we do not always agree, we do choose to respect everyone's position. The board began community conversations about our facilities in February. In May, we passed a resolution which asked the City Council to allow voters to decide the future of our children and public education. The legislation was introduced at the City Council meeting last Tuesday night, and a public hearing will be held on June 11th. It is scheduled to move to committee on June 18th, and it will go to the Finance and Rules Committee on that same day. I would like to thank Dr. Green for her leadership and willingness to engage our community in conversations about our schools that have been a long time coming. It is my hope that we will continue to work with city leaders in order to allow the citizens of our community to cast their vote and allow the collective voice of our community to participate in the sheer decision-making process regarding our schools. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Ms. Hershey. The superintendent's report, and I'm going to be a little redundant, Ms. Hershey just talked about the master's facilities update, and she thanked me for my leadership. I want to thank the school board for having the courage and leadership to move forward with it. I'm simply the person who makes the recommendation, and it took the leadership of this board to determine that this was a worthy cause, and so I appreciate everything that the board has done. This is still just a timeline that, that we had a number of community meetings in March of 2019, as well as meetings during April through June. Those meetings that were happening in April and June were input meetings from certain communities that felt they needed more opportunity to share their concerns about the master's facilities plan. And in the month of, excuse me, in the month of May, the board approved the resolution to send to the City Council. On June 11th, there will be two meetings. In the morning, we will have a school board workshop where I will share additional information about options for the board to consider for the final master's facilities plan, and then that evening, the City Council will have a public hearing on the resolution from the school board. Also, on June 18th, if that moves forward, that resolution will go to Finance and Rules Committee, and we'll review the bill, and then the possibility of the full council to address the bill on June 25, 2019. All of those, especially the June 11th meeting, is open to the public, and we encourage you to attend both the workshop and the June City Council public hearing. Also during this month, we had the release of third-grade reading scores. Just as a reminder, third grade is a very pivotal grade level because by state statute, any student that scores a Level 1, that would be the first, unfortunately, red flag that a student could possibly be retained in third grade if they cannot pass with an approved, for lack of a better word, Concordance Score on a program such as iReady or a portfolio. This information is our data over the last five years, and what you will see is that for all of the And what you will see is that for all of the districts, the big seven that are represented here, um, most of the districts either went up one point or went down one point, with the exception of Palm Beach, which went down two points, and Pinellas went up three points. But here's the- the thing I want to point out, is that when you have movement of one point, even if it's a plus or a negative, you really have no movement. Um, there is this, and I'm not going to get technical, but there's like this standard of deviation. If you're within this standard, you're still performing at the same level. So even though we had a positive one point, we're- it really wasn't different from last year when it was a negative one point. So we have to review this information to see what is it going to take to move the needle. You'll see, uh, in 2016, the district went from forty-six percent proficient to fifty percent proficient, plus four. That would be the beginning of a move that someone could say something happened between 2015 to 2016 to move four points, um, when the state only moved one. However, for the next three years, the district really has not moved. It went up one point, went back for one point, now we're up one point. So basically, this means, uh, that we are stagnant as it relates to third grade reading scores. And we need to, um, look at, is it something in professional development? Is it our resource? We haven't changed our literacy resource since, well, I wasn't here, whatever year it was that you started with it. We haven't changed it. And yes, we introduced some supplemental resources this year, but we really have to look at that core resource and make a decision. Is this- sometimes core resources will get you to one point, and then it's- it- that's- that's the best it's going to get a group, not just a group of students, but mass groups of students, and we have to come back and review, what do we need to change? What's different? Because the standards have been the same since 2000- FSA has been here since 2015. So, um, ELA standards really have not changed over the last five years. And that means that there's something we need to do differently. And this is just one set of data, so, um, it- it doesn't indicate how that- what that means for fourth and fifth. Third grade is the first year of entering, um, standardized testing. So it's always a challenge for the little ones. This is the first time they've taken a standardized test, and- and so I do think some of that plays into this, but, um, as you can see, all the other districts, the big seven, you're seeing that they're not really moving a whole- they may be higher than us, but their movement is going back and forth. And that, in my opinion, tells me that these districts, just like us, we need to evaluate what is happening with that core. And by law, or generally by rule, when you purchase a core, it has a six-year lifecycle. And by the executive order, if you remember, the governor put out an executive order to readdress the standards, and we received information that, okay, everyone needs to, um, hold with the current curriculum resource that you are using before moving to change that out, because we do not know what will those new standards look like. And we are in the process of especially working with our, um, Title I schools and providing additional resource for, um, students that, um, struggle with the reading process to support them even more, as well as our high-performing schools, giving them, um, that autonomy of whatever you're doing is working, and you need to keep doing it. There isn't a such thing as a one-size-fits-all. There is a thing that we need to start with a standard, and then based on the performance of students or, um, the students that are in those schools that struggle more, then we need to differentiate from that core line. So I just- I gave a really long explanation about our third grade scores, that we're stagnant, and we need to do something to sort of almost like jumpstart it to get us to another place. And here's a perfect example: high school graduation. Five years ago, the high school graduation in Duval County was somewhere in the seventies. And through, I believe, the leadership of Dr. Kelly Coker Daniels and her team, they did something transformative with high school graduation, with these, um, individual school meetings, going out to the school, tracking, and when I say tracking, monitoring student progress, looking at, um, student grades. That was so transformative that you saw the graduation rates increasing. Not only did they increase, they keep increasing. Um, now, will we hit a point? Yes, we will. We will hit a point where it will take, ooh, another level to get it to go even higher. But that's an example, when you've introduced something transformative and you keep introducing that, or you are consistent with it, and you see your, um, your evidence of improvement. So really gave you a long story for about third grade proficiency. Um, also this month, we went to the State Board Meeting of Educat- we had the State Board of Education meeting with Duval County, and at that State Board of Education, we had to share our future recommendations for two schools that have been struggling, um, for a number of years. Unfortunately, Northwestern, um, has been struggling for the past fifteen years. During that time, they've made only one C. Their other school grades have been either a school grade of D. Uh, I think mostly it's been a D. I'm- I'm not sure how many, if they've ever fallen to an F. Uh, and the second school would be Lake Forest, and Lake Forest has been either a school grade of D or F for at least the past six years. What I'm sharing is the power- I did share this PowerPoint with you all, but here is the slide on Northwestern. Based on our information and our data, we're still predicting that Northwestern would, um, still receive a school grade of D, uh, for this year, though we're- it would show basically stagnant, thirty-six percent, thirty-six percent. At that, um, board meeting, we shared the potential scenarios, basically what would be my recommendation is to redistrict all sixth-grade students to eligible schools for the 2019-20 school year. And when we say eligible schools, that means those schools have to have a C grade or better. The seventh and eighth grade students, as we have in the past, they've- they've been offered opportunity scholarships to attend other schools that have a grade of C or better, and we will continue to do that. But we are recommending closing the school at the end of the 2019-20 school year. Now, one may think that this was, uh, bold, but if we go back to our master's facilities plan, we had indicated that Northwestern was going to be repurposed as an elementary school. Um, this meeting just sort of moved this process up a year, and that we would repurpose the school either as a K-five or K-six elementary school. So my recommendation through our top plan, which we have to amend, is that all incoming sixth graders would be reassigned to the eligible schools, and that seventh and eighth grade would be open to opportunity scholarships, but that the school would still serve seventh and eighth, and then, um, close at the end of the 2019-20 school year. Just as a reminder for the board, please remember that they've changed the definition now to persistently low-performing schools. You either have to have three Cs within the last five years, they don't have to be consecutive, but you have to have three Cs, or immediately, um, the very last year, if you have a B, then that gets you out of the definition of persistently low-performing. Northwestern, even if the only way they could get out of persistently low-performing is they would have to make a B this school year. Um, the same applies to Lake Forest. Because Lake Forest has either been- it had a school grade of D or F over the last, um, five years, they have no opportunity to get out of the definition of persistently low-performing unless they make a B grade. Based on our information that we have, we- we are predicting that they will improve, but they will improve from the current school grade of F to a school grade of D. Therefore, Lake Forest could not, um, get out of persistently low-performing unless they make a school grade of B. And based on that information, um, and again, both Lake Forest and Northwestern were part of the master's facilities plan as the possibility of, um, consolidating and repurposing. So my recommendation would be to close and repurpose Lake Forest by consolidating students in a high-performing elementary, North Shore Elementary. North Shore has been at least a school grade of B or C over the last five years. So North- North Shore is a school that would not even- even if their school grade was not a C, which we're not, um, nothing that we've seen so far indicates that they wouldn't be a C or above. They are, um, not one of the schools we would be concerned about being persistently low-performing. If you- I know you know this, that North Shore was once built to be a K-A. Currently, it has over thirteen hundred seats, and today, North Shore has about five hundred and eighty students. So its capacity is very- utilization is very low. Part of that master's facilities plan was to increase the capacity at North Shore, one because it is, um, one of our, if you can say newer, it's one of our newer schools. Um, its age is maybe ten or fifteen years. Um, so the- the utilization and- and the, um, FCI is very low at North Shore, and the things that we would need to do at Lake- North Shore would be more about safety and security and just, um, FCI issues. Ms. Hershey just talked about graduation. I know that each of you attended, um, your school's graduations. I attended eleven, and I've decided I shook all seven thousand six hundred and seventy-one seniors' hands, even though I might not have been- I felt like I shook seven thousand. But, um, it was indeed an honor and a pleasure to be there with them. The fact that our students run most of their senior graduations is just phenomenal, and- and, um, the students just really did an outstanding job, and the- for many parents, they were very excited. We- I saw everything from tiny little claps to huh, they're- they're hoarse now from the screaming that they were doing for their students to walk across the stage, and we are just excited. Um, just to let you know, remember, seniors are still graduating. We have students still graduating. They can continue to graduate all the way to June thirtieth, and, um, we believe our scholarship is going to surpass the hundred and twenty-two million that, um, was hap- that- that we helped last year. We believe we're going to surpass that, and when we get those final numbers, um, we'll make sure that we update the board and our community. I do want to let the board know that, um, when we get all school, um, grades in or school scores, we will have a department update so that- but I felt, just because it was just third grade, I wanted to put it in- into my, um, update for the board. So we'll have a department report when all of the data is in. Thank you, Ms. Hershey.
We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. Those wishing to address the board must fill out a blue speaker's card. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask the audience to refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expecta- expectations for civil discourse. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20 PM. Thank you for taking the time to address the board. Our first speaker tonight is Kyla Gaines, followed by Steve Gritzak, followed by Denise Scott. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name.
My name is Kyla Gels, and this is my daughter Malia. Um, she's fourteen years old. She suffers from complex regional pain syndrome, which is nerve damage. This condition, on the Miguel Pain Scale, is considered the worst pain imaginable. It's worse than childbirth, worse than amputation of a finger or toe. My daughter has complex regional pain syndrome throughout most of her body. This condition is considered the suicide disease. I wanted to address the Duval County School District for adopting a policy for medical marijuana in our schools for a qualip- qualified patient like my daughter. Governor Rick Scott, now Senator, signed legislation on June 23rd, 2018, that allows our children to take medical marijuana at school. But to date, leadership in the Duval County School District has yet to determine how to navigate between conflicting state directives and federal ban. The law is quite clear. Each school district shall adopt a policy and procedure for allowing a student who is a qualified patient, as defined in Statute 381 dot 986, to use marijuana obtained pursuant to that section. Here are some counties that have already adapted policies and have not lost federal funding. Broward County. Their policy requires the parent to bring the medicine to the school and administer the medication. Now, the parent or caregiver must submit a written request forty-eight hours to the principal in advance. They must also fill out and submit the district's authorization for medical marijuana, low THC cannabis used for a qualified student form. The parent or caregiver must provide her the copy of the caregiver's and medical marijuana register ID cards. This was made for five-year-old Brooke. She can now use her medication in school. Palm Beach County. Parent must bring the medication to the school nurse, who then administers the medication and returns it to the parent at the end of the day. The Velicia County took the next step to allow students to receive medical marijuana at school, after the community urged board members to help improve the quality life of sick children. Following the community's urging and Velicia County School Board's action, now medical marijuana can be administered on campus. It's called Zoe's Policy. She was six years old and suffering. But thanks to the Velicia County School Board, she can now have her medication during school hours. I'm standing before the Duval County School Board tonight, seeking consideration for my child's illness and the illness of other children out there suffering. I respectfully request the Duval County School Board to adapt a policy where my child and other children out there suffering illness be able to take this medication on school grounds like any other medication. Medical marijuana should be treated like any other medication. My daughter loves school. She loves learning, she loves her teachers, and she loves her friends. She shouldn't have to be removed off of premises to take a medication that state approved her for. She was not born with this, guys. She didn't ask for this. Think for a moment if this was your child or grandchild going through chronic pain throughout the day with an illness that no one has found a cure for. My daughter Malia will deal with this for the rest of her life. I'm just asking for a policy in place that helps all parties involved without disruption to our education or our school day, given their legislation in place almost a year now. I'm asking y'all to be bold and do right for Malia and other children out there suffering. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Steve Gritzak? And if- I mispronounced her name, if you could say it correctly for the record.
Hi, everyone. I'm Steve Gritzak. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of ESS, and I wanted to take a little bit of time to allow you guys to kind of put some faces with our company. We are currently the recommended vendor for the substitute teaching and paraprofessional substitute services. I just wanted to let you talk- let you know a little bit about our company and what we do. So currently, uh, we service about seven hundred and fifty school districts across the country in twenty-five states, employing about fifty-five thousand. We've got a great company. We're agile, we make decisions quickly, and we're really excited to be a part of Duval County. I worked with the district previously for about eight years, uh, lived here for six. So there really is a special place in my heart for- for Duval, and I understand what Duval County means to a company, what it meant to us in the past, and what it means to our company today. And I want to give the board and the community the assurance that we are extremely dedicated to this, and myself personally as well. Uh, as for the transition, uh, we- As for the transition, we started the transition the moment we were able to get into the schools. We committed to visiting every school within the first five days. We visited every school twice. We've had our substitute meetings that have been highly successful. We've gotten great feedback, great interaction. We've partnered with the human resource team, the IT team, the finance team to get all of the policies and procedures and transition components from our proposal into a real-life living document that, that really is helping us navigate and we just, again, feel great about where we are right now and wanted to just bring the whole team up here and just, again, these are folks that are on the ground. They've been on the ground for, for close to a month now and just assure the board that we are dedicated to this partnership and we look forward to it for years to come should the board vote in our direction.
Thank you. Denise Scott, followed by Eunice Barnum and Darlene Miller.
Good evening. I'm Denise Scott. I'm officially retired and it's been a pleasure to serve the students, parents, and teachers of Duval County Public Schools for almost thirty-four years. However, I'm here to express some disappointment that I have with this board and I don't think that this board values some of the students' lives. Dr. Green, I'm expressing that this does not include you because you inherited some of this stuff. The real problem that I have are decisions being made without considering the impact that it would have on students, teachers, or staff. For instance, we have too many schools that have had more principals within five years. To be specific, Ramona Elementary School, Ramona Boulevard Elementary School, has had four principals and assistant principals in five years. That does not give a principal time to put procedures in place and it definitely doesn't give them time to build relationships in the school or in the community. I've been told that it takes three years to see if a plan works. The first year to see what's happening, the second year to implement the change, and the third year to see if that change works. How can a school see success if the leadership team is constantly changing? Another point I want to make is that when you're elevating an assistant principal to a principal and that current principal is leaving, why not promote that assistant principal to a principal instead of sending them to another school? The current assistant principal already knows what the community, is already involved in the community and know what's going on in the school. Seems like that would benefit a lot of stakeholders involved. This board has allowed some principals to wreck heaven and wreck havoc in schools without the consequences, only to send them to other schools to ruin those people's lives. Most vulnerable students need discipline, guidance, dedication, and compassion. How did we allow A N E R Morgan to have a complete disruption of all policies and procedures for an entire school year? Schools like that are most fragile and need stability and consistency and great leadership. I know this firsthand because I spent thirty-three years at that school and it was my desire to retire from there. I decided to leave that school in August of two thousand and eighteen because decisions were made, were not made in the best interest of students, teachers, or staff. I worked for eight principals in that school with excellent evaluations. We have to make sure that we're sending people that have students' relationships at heart. When students feel that they can't ev-, that they need a change to ensure their stability, it's time to listen and take action. The vision of Duval County Policy, Duval County Public School, is to provide excellent education in every school, in every classroom, for every student, every day. We have to be vilge-, vigilant, vigilant, vigilant to make that this, this vision happen for all schools and everywhere, not just for students that I feel and I always say, across the border. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We don't typically do this, but I would just like to ask Ms. Chastain if the superintendent could make a statement. Is that appropriate as a point of order? I mean, is it where you?
So normally, under the board policy, we don't comment. Perhaps we can make that comment at a different time in the evening instead of right now?
Okay. All right. Eunice Barnum, followed by Darlene Miller and Douglas Henning.
Let me start by saying I am so disappointed. Excluding one person who's only been here ten months, the rest of you, been here earning paychecks, been here with your degreed selves, been here, year after year, election after election, school year after school year. Some of you were born and reared here and graduated from some of these same failing schools and you sit here. And you watch children's lives destroyed. My own children attended Lake Forest. I haven't heard anybody say anything about giving back your pay. You failed, you didn't master, you didn't do what we paid you to do. I want my money back. I'm tired of watching grown folk make money on the backs of children who are helpless. Cash your check, feed your family, ride in your fine car, live in your fine house. How do you live with yourselves? And children can't read under your osprey, under your leadership, under your guidance. Would you think you got it going on yourselves? Yes, somebody need to wake you up, you sleep. You're pretending and your pretense is hurting people. And know what I find out? That some of you were the third graders too. They failed you and now you are grown adults and you can't function either. You can't read, you can't interpret, you don't know the law, you don't know where to find the law, you don't even know how to ask the appropriate questions. But I'm tired of watching children have to suffer because of grown folk. These are not winos. These are not the people sleeping under the tree. It's you elite folk that showing up on these jobs.
Thank you, Ms. Barnum.
You're quite welcome.
Darlene Miller, followed by Douglas Henning.
Good evening. As my husband and I reflect on the last, about what, three years of coming up here and asking you for your help and the assistance of our special education children, we do thank you for all the help we have received. Our son is actually one of the hands you shook, shook during graduation. Let me tell you a little bit more about him because this leads into the fact that we will stand behind you and we will see you next Tuesday at the city council meeting because public schools are important and they're very important to our ESC children. My son started in a private school. Halfway through kindergarten, they call and say, this is not a good fit. He should be reading, he should be doing this, he should be doing that, and he's sleeping all day. Well, we agreed it was not a good fit. We took him out of private school. We put him in public school halfway through his kindergarten year. By June of kindergarten, he was reading on second grade level. Public school was the only place we were going to get accommodations, support, at an accelerated pace that he needed. He finished high school with a twelve fifty on the SAT, that's two hundred and fifty points higher than average. These children need help and I keep, implore you to keep, keep it up, keep up this fight. My husband and I will be standing behind you. We will be speaking and we will keep up the fight. We have SAC chairs, maybe they need to send out emails. We have PTA chair, maybe she needs to send out emails. And maybe our teachers' union need to sell, send out emails. But this is a fight you can't give up because the South Texas schools need help. We realize that. And for some of us, our other children had nowhere else to go except the public school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Henning. I wrote Douglas. This past year, since, since August, it's been my honor and pleasure to serve as a teacher of mathematics at Edward H. White High School. It has come to my attention that on the agenda, this is the approval of the agreement with City Year and I had throughout the entire year an excellent relationship with the City Year program at our school. For part of my, part of my classes, I had City Year teachers who were in, in the classroom assisting and outside of school, they provided tutoring services that were critical. You talked earlier about moving the needle in schools and making, seeing jumps and you see that, you know, in, on average, over whole schools and whole districts, but also you see it in individual classrooms. And those students who took the most advantage of the City Year services were the ones who I saw the needle move on the most, the ones who I saw start the year with significant skills deficits and end the year having made large jumps, not, not to come up, you know, to move above average perhaps and to, to move relative to their own, their own original skill level. And I think it's very important that Edward Wa-, Ed White retaining the City Year program for, for several reasons. One, the, the improvement that I've seen in, in those students who had access to that. Two, the access to, to computers and the access to other peers and the, the, the teachers of City Year who are able to provide them with the services they need outside of school hours because I only see them for an hour and a half a day, you know, outside of that. And math takes a lot of practice and if they have someone there encouraging them to do that practice and to get those, those assignments accomplished and to maybe walk them through certain assignments that they have trouble with, that perhaps they don't have other figures in their lives who are able to do so, and I can't do that for everyone in, in the ninety minutes that I have to cover a lesson, then I think it provides an incredibly valuable service and I implore you to retain it for our school. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to the comments from parent organizations. Are there any parent organizations wishing to address the board? Don't think I see, don't think I see anyone. Are there any comments from district student government association? I do not think, probably enjoying summer break. Comments from employee organizations? Anyone wishing to speak? Approval of minutes, the Duval County School Board approved minutes for the meetings listed in the agenda item. April twenty-five, two thousand and nineteen, subcommittee meeting superintendent evaluation tool. May six, two thousand and nineteen, board workshop. May six, two thousand and nineteen, board member meeting Hershey and Grimes. May six, two thousand and nineteen, community meeting Jean Ribault High School. May seven, two thousand and nineteen, regular board meeting. May eight, two thousand and nineteen, special board meeting, student expulsion hearing. May nine, two thousand and nineteen, community meeting William Raines High School. May fourteen, two thousand and nineteen, board workshop. May fifteen, two thousand and nineteen, board member meeting Hershey and Joyce. May twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, policy handbook review committee meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's moved by board member Grimes and seconded by vice chair Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you've passed this seven zero. Approval of consent agenda. Are there any items to place on the consent agenda, agenda or items for discussion?
Can I just put the calendar item on consent with comment? Add it up and then I click to another screen. It's, um, here we are, number two, district calendar modification. Just consent with comment.
Do you have that, Ms. Spira?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's the first time we've had something called all the floor, so I'm trying to figure out. I have this nice little script here and that's spontaneity and I'm trying to, so if it's consent with comments, is that what you said? Okay. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's moved by vice chair Jones and seconded by board member Willie. I believe Ms. Smith-Warras, you can speak now on that if I'm following this. Is that, did I do it right or is it wrong?
Madam Chairman, no, I think we need to vote on the consent agenda.
Vote and then she's?
And then we move to the consent with comment as the next item.
Okay. All right. So we will vote now on the consent agenda. By your actions, this is passed seven zero. Board member Smith-Warras, your consent with comments.
Thank you. Through the chair to the superintendent, could you just summarize the change that we're making to the calendar?
In previous years, every other week, every other Wednesday was an early release day for the school district and I believe it was one hour early release. We, working with a committee and that committee included teachers, community, individuals, and district staff, we are now going to only have once a month an early release day, but it will be two hours. So we believe, one, it should be a benefit to families that now it's only once a month that they may need to do childcare for that early release day and it's a benefit for our schools and teachers because now it, at least two hours that they can come together and do professional development at their, at their school. So that is the major change on the calendar.
Thank you. I, I had this on my list actually for, for the record, but I thought a little earlier in the evening, we might catch a few more people. And I think this, as we talked about at the workshop, will be a very well-received change to the calendar. I want to really thank Vicki Schultz and the HR team for pulling this together. This is something that we have heard over time and we got the somewhat unfortunate opportunity to test it out when we needed to make up some weather time, but to, to see what the opportunity might be to shift some of this professional development into other times during the school year. And so this will not reduce the total amount of professional development time, but it will make the learning calendar more consistent for students. And so I'm very excited about this as a board member. I really want to thank staff for problem solving on it and the superintendent for bringing it forward as a recommendation, but I also think that it's very important that we communicate this so that as parents, I know we're just starting summer, but soon are planning for fall, that they understand and know that this change has been made to the calendar. So I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Smith-Warras. We are now on the discussion agenda. Academic Services, College Board Suite of Assessments. Dr. Green, would you read the recommendation, please?
That the Duval County School Board approved the purchase of the SAT, preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, PSAT slash N, NMSQT, and the PSAT eight-nine from the College Board in the amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-eight thousand
And the PSAT eight-nine from the College Board in the amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. That the Duval County School Board authorized the board chairman or chair, or vice chairman and the superintendent to execute the agreement contingent upon form approval by the Office of General Counsel.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It was moved by board member Grimes and seconded by board member Smith-Waraz. Board member Joyce, you placed this item on discussion.
Yes. I guess I want to start off by saying I'm not persuaded that all students should take this test and the district should bear the expense of it. I believe that we over-assess our children. I think that specifically for our seventh and eighth graders who are level one and level two students, they're taking this test when they could be receiving instruction time. So I think it's a waste of, of time for them to do that. When we have these children that are in seventh and eighth grade reading on level one and level two are in intensive reading classes. And so not only do they take the, all of the baseline assessments, but at the beginning of the year, they also take DAR testing, which this teacher has to individually give the, this test to those students. Takes anywhere from ten to twenty-five minutes to give it, and she has to give it to the entire class, which takes away a couple of weeks' worth of instruction time. It, it is just my opinion that where we can make a difference in the assessments and how many that these students are taking, we have the option to do that here. And that's why I pulled it.
Is there any further comments or discussion? Board member Smith-Waraz.
Thank you, Chairman Hershey. I, I do not disagree that there are a tremendous number of assessments, each with its individual purpose, but collectively making up a lot of testing. Some of it is required, some of it we do because of a particular diagnostic or a particular purpose as a tool for future learning for students. Several years ago, the board expanded PSAT, SAT and ACT testing opportunities for all students as a commitment to equity. And as a commitment to every student having the opportunity to demonstrate what they know and understand what they can learn if it is their desire to go to college. And so these college entrance exams give them that, that baseline, that growth, that opportunity for application. They also do that across the board for students regardless of their demographics, regardless of their performance, regardless of the socioeconomic status of their household. And we have seen that with some academic coaching that comes alongside these things, that, that students are able to shine on these nationally norm tests in ways that they don't always have the same success on the Florida Standards Assessment. And so having the, the PSAT portion of this where students are getting familiar with the test, getting used to what it means, I believe has been an important part of our district culture. I absolutely support, as we said at the workshop, that we should review the testing calendar and that we should know the collective purpose of all of those assessments as well as the individual purposes. And if we can find some strategic ways to reduce that, I'm all for it. But I do feel that these tests serve a particular purpose and that testing all students rather than just some students is a commitment to, to equity in this district that I would like to see us continue. So I will support the item.
Board member Willie?
Yeah, to that point, board member Joyce, I totally understand the, the over-assessment and testing. But if you, if we take that example of the ones and twos, I think what it does is it, it does create inequity. And I want opportunity and access. And I think that's what this does as we test across and it gives folks the opportunity, as board member Smith-Waraz stated, the opportunity to showcase and show what they can do on a nationally recognized exam. So I wouldn't want to take away that opportunity. But I do want to just bring up the fact that we did talk about the scheduling and I think that's even more important as we look at not only this test but all tests and see where they lay in the calendar year. So, but I appreciate you bringing the concern.
Any further comments?
Chair, excuse me. I was wondering if maybe the superintendent might be able to share more information about why this recommendation was made and the uses of the testing, test scores and that information that we receive back from students.
The PSAT, which is done in, there's a PSAT eight-nine and it's done in seventh and eighth grade. The main uses of that particular assessment is that students can qualify for a program called TIP. It is an accelerated program out of Duke University. And many students can also qualify for Khan Academy. And, and I think that's mostly for eighth grade. If they get an eligible score, then those students have access to Khan Academy to support. All students, I'm sorry, sorry. All students have access to Khan Academy. That's why I need them. Once you get into high school, the PSAT is the beginning portion of the National Merit Scholarship for students who have a certain score, they, they then start to qualify. It also helps with scheduling students, helping students to see where they need to improve or brush up if they need a concordant score with SAT or ACT. So it has benefits for students that open up opportunities for them. I, if, if you will, if, if it's not a, a problem, I do want to also share with Ms., school board member Ms. Joyce, through the chair to Ms. Joyce, that you do find students who for some odd reason, they may score level one or two on FSA, but through here we find, you have skill. What is the issue? So now we can have a counselor intervene, meet with that student, their family and say, you know, we do have some students that for whatever reason don't always apply themselves. And the, this, this, these particular assessments gives our schools the opportunity to possibly engage with those students to find out, well, what is it that, you know, we can do to engage you to really demonstrate what you know? Because based on this information, it says that you, that you have, you're capable of handling more rigorous coursework. But yet at, during what we're seeing day to day, they may not be doing so.
Any further discussion or comments? I call for your vote. Board member Joyce?
I'm sorry.
This passed six one. Human resources, human resource services staffing contract with ESS Southeast LLC for substitute teaching employment services. Dr. Green, would you please read your recommendation?
That the Duval County School Board approved the contract with ESS Southeast LLC for substitute teaching employment services for an initial term of July one, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, subject to annual appropriated funds. That the chairman or vice chairman and the superintendent be authorized to execute the contract upon approval as to form and sufficiently by the Office of General Counsel. The authority be delegated to the superintendent or designated to renew the contract for subsequent years provided terms and conditions are favorable to the district and subject to availability of funds. There are three potential one-year renewals.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It was moved by board member Grimes and seconded by board member Anderson. Board member Joyce, you put this item on discussion.
Yes. So I, I pulled this item because I have a couple of concerns about the company's ability to meet the needs of our district. When I inquired how many other districts they served, they serviced, I believe that information came back that it was around eleven or thirteen other districts. Is that... Through the chair to Dr. Green.
I'm going to bring up that email, but I believe that is correct.
So I inquired on how many other districts that they currently serviced. Their information that I received back was about thirteen and, or eleven. And that those districts were much smaller than Duval County. So that was cause for concern for me. Also, the fact that we received the contract or we're, we're voting on this and it's two and a half months before school starts. And so I'm concerned that making that transition and fully staffing and meeting the needs of the district by August the first could potentially be a problem. If this would have come before the board, say, six months ago, and we would have had some time to put everything in place, I'd be more comfortable voting to approve this. But I, I just, these are my concerns. I think that they need to be addressed.
Any other comments, board member Grimes?
Madam Chair, could I maybe through the superintendent ask our staff to tell us what went into their decision? I know it was a, a lot of, a lot of time.
Through the chair, may we have Ms. Schultz speak? Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. Through the chair to the board. We use the RFP process and it is a rather lengthy process where we solicit bids. We had individual groups bid and then we had a group of principals and district staff review the proposals. Three individuals were asked to come in and actually present. They made their presentations and we used a rubric and scoring guide in order to make the decision. I'd also like to add that they've already received over one thousand applicants and, of people who are interested in subbing for next year. And so as it relates to Kelly, we had about one thousand seven hundred in the pool and so far we've already received over half of that.
Thank you. Board member Grimes.
And there was also a protest.
Yes. Kelly did protest it and that was reviewed and we are now moving forward with ESS.
And so you think this is the best company to go with, right?
I'm fully supporting this company, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Board member Willie, did you want to say something or...
Yeah, maybe through the chair, through the superintendent. Because I, I think the question and concern is the timing on if we start school and we may not have enough substitutes. So you said they have a thousand applicant pool. Say on average, how many substitutes will we need on, on that time period for us to be able to make sure we had coverage roughly on a average day?
So a thousand would be about what we would need. But, you know, all of them don't show up every single day and we still have almost two months in order to actually hit the pavement and start recruiting full steam ahead.
Vice chair Jones?
Thank you, madam chair. I shared some of the same concerns at the workshop about the timeliness and... But it's my understanding, I guess, through the chair, the superintendent or to legal, we, we had RFP and we have to, and that's set by state statute, so we have to go with the lowest responsible bidder. In this case, it was ESS. And so I think the bigger concern is having subs that are willing to go in some of, some of the more difficult schools to staff. That's the biggest problem. It's not so much having enough subs. It's, it's having subs willing to go in some of your more difficult schools. And I don't know if they're offering an incentive for those schools, through the chair to...
Through the chair to board member Jones, yes, there is a hard to staff piece that is given to those schools.
So that's, that's consistent with what we had with the previous contract. Is that correct?
Previously, the hard to staff was more for content areas. And so now we've done an analysis of which schools are hard to staff. And so now those schools will have that designation.
So with that understanding, you know, I think we'd be ill-advised not to follow state statute and approve this contract.
Board member Willie?
Can you clarify, maybe through council, the lowest, you said the lowest qualified bidder, is that the, exactly, is that the language?
Through the chair to board member Willie, in, in an RFP, a number of areas are evaluated, including cost. In this case, this proposer, my understanding, was the lowest proposer, but there were other areas that were evaluated as well. So this was a request for proposals as distinguished by an invitation to bid, which is low price only. This was a broader evaluation include, that was described in the RFP. And specifically, when an agency issues an RFP or an invitation to bid or whatever the method is, courts require that the agency follow its own rules that it wrote down in the RFP. And this RFP had a lot of the same standard requirements, of course, modified for the particular content for the services to be, to be delivered. But it's the same, I don't want to say boilerplate, but a lot of legal terms and conditions that we put in all of the district's RFPs.
Yeah, I just wanted to ensure it was, it's not just the lowest price, it's also the other pieces that are, that are there too. I didn't want, I think we just take the lowest price and that's it.
Yes, sir.
It's mostly, it's other pieces. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Board member Anderson?
Thank you. I do, I do agree with board member Joyce in, in one area that the timing of this coming to the board was a little bit difficult. I know we had this conversation in workshop. It sounds like pieces of this rollout have already started to happen. And I, and I will say thank you very much to the ESS staff for, for working really diligently to get this up and, and running. It just seems, you know, without this approval, it seemed like the timing was a little wonky, I'll say. That's the technical term that I'll use. But again, thank you very much. The, the information that they provided to us tonight was something like seven hundred and fifty districts. I jotted that number down because I, I too recognize kind of the difference in what, what had come through the email and what was said tonight. And so I, I appreciate the competition that ESS will offer. I think that, especially this month, we're no stranger to competition. And I think that that can help drive, drive performance. And, and I hope that you all are ready and prepared to get the numbers and, and bring the staff in because these are our children and these are our schools and these are our teachers that we have to take care of. And, and I hope that I, I feel confident that staff and the RFP process has delivered the right, the right company for the job.
I have two additional questions. So through the chair to Ms. Chastain. So by state statute, the board has to approve this contract. Is that what I'm hearing from?
Through the chair to board member Joyce. So if the board doesn't approve this contract, then you don't have a contract for substitute services. By following the process, the recommendation is this particular vendor because this was the vendor that the evaluation committee, through the scoring and the evaluation of all the content areas, was the highest ranked proposer. Part of the delay is that there was a protest and so there had to be a hearing and a final order issued. So it was also protested. A lot of these similar issues were... Um, so it was also protested and a lot of these similar issues were were raised um during that protest hearing. So as far as the board, this is something that requires a competitive process and an RFP is a competitive process. That is under state board rule. There isn't, it would be difficult for there to be discretion at this stage to make a change because depending on what that is, it could be a deviation from the rules that are set forth in the RFP.
And then one final question. I know the contract originally is for five years. Is there anything in the contract that's written, the the language, that if this company is not meeting the expectations after the first year or the second year, is there um anything to protect the district that way?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, through the chair to Board Member Joyce, that's an excellent question and this is something that we routinely cover in our RFPs. Um, in that standard language that I referred to earlier, there is um always the ability to put a contractor on notice if there's an event of default and let them cure. Um, we also have a failure to appropriate funds because we, you know, we live annually in a budget cycle. And last, we have a termination for convenience, meaning upon written notice a certain amount of time, I don't have that memorized, um that it could be terminated as well. All of these things, uh in in my opinion, protect the district um in its contracts and its contracted services.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you have passed this seven zero. We are now on the public hearing portion of our agenda. Public hearing and vote revisions to chapter eight. Board policy that the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommendation revisions to the following policies in the School Board Manual, Chapter Eight. Policy eight point nine six, critical incident preparedness. Um, is there, oh, I gotta open the public hearing. Open the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
No.
This is moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Is there uh any board member who wishes to speak? Board Member Smith Juarez?
Thank you. Through the chair to the superintendent, um understanding that this policy, critical incident preparedness, um speaks to uh training and implementation of security measures, some of which by state statute are exempt from public record for good reason. Um, I just want to ask uh one clarifying question. Um, does the passage of this policy allow any school personnel not currently authorized to carry a firearm on campus? It's not a trick question.
I wasn't sure I heard it correctly. Does the policy allow?
Does the policy allow any uh or the accompanying documents that are not part of public record, allow any staff member not currently authorized to carry a firearm on campus, to carry a firearm?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith Juarez, no.
Okay, I just, for clarity. Yes, for the record and for clarity, thank you.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you've passed this item seven zero. We are on to board member travel. That the Duval County School Board approved the following board member, board member travel, June twenty-sixth through twenty-nine, twenty nineteen, Washington DC, School Board Leaders Conference. Uh, Board Member Willie, is there a motion? It was moved by a Board Member Smith Juarez and seconded by Board Member Grimes. Uh, is there any discussion? I I actually have a question. Can you tell us a little bit about this conference? I'm just not familiar with it. I haven't, I haven't seen it. Can you tell us who's sponsoring it and what you expect?
Yes, so uh it's a, it's a a program called Leadership for Educational Equity. Um, and they basically put on a national conference each year and they invite different school board members from around the country to come. They invite um speakers from around the country as well and really just get you uh some hard and soft skills on how to be a best board member, how to work amongst your team and those sorts of pieces. And hopefully, as I, I can send out the full agenda and make sure I send a full report too as I come back.
Uh, well, we always like for you to share. I was just, just curious. So thank you very much. And I think it's also helpful for the public to know as well, um you know, when we, when we travel, the the professional development that takes place. Is there uh any other questions? Seeing none, I call for your vote. By your actions, you have passed this item seven zero. Superintendent travel, that the Duval County School Board approved the following superintendent travel, June twelfth through thirteenth, uh twenty nineteen, Tampa, Florida, FSBA F A D S S, twenty nineteen, Summer Annual Conference. Is there a motion?
No.
Uh, it's moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Grimes. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. Is the, is it working?
By your actions, you've passed this item seven zero. Um, I know we are far away on our agenda from public record, but we are on for the record and I was going to let Dr. Green speak if uh she would like to comment, uh since that was not the time at the public comment portion. Thank you, Chairwoman Hershey. I just needed to address that um there was a comment about principal changes and really that is the role of the superintendent and I was given a pass and the the information was sent to, to say to the board, but whether it's me or the superintendent prior, it's the superintendent that makes those decisions. So I just wanted to correct that, that yes, the board does, they have to approve those recommendations, but the the only reason they could actually not approve is based on seven sins or they have to have um uh good cause. Thank you. I mean, I was saying seven deadly sins, but that's part of the good cause. Um, and just wanted to just clarify that. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, 'cause I was sitting there thinking, that's not my job.
So we will start with uh Board Member Anderson. Do you have anything you'd like to share on for the record?
Sure, thank you so much. I um been busy this month. It's been a crazy month. Um, first, I would like to say thank you very much to our board chair, um Vice Chair uh Jones, all of the board members, but I think especially you two, you've been working really hard on this referendum and every time I turn around, I hear of another meeting scheduled and it's mind boggling to me. So I do wanna say publicly thank you for all of the meetings and all of the work that you have, you've put into this. Um, I also want to to say thank you to Dr. Green um for her presentation and her composure and her poise. Um, at the state board meeting, um I I was um impressed, is the, is the term I'll use, um with your commitment to our students, to our communities, uh and I I appreciate that very much, so thank you so much. Um, I've had the opportunity to meet with seniors at Fletcher this month and that was a very fun experience. Got to go out and chat with some of those kids. Um, I know that sometimes they don't always have the opportunity to connect with their elected officials, um but I wanted to hear about their educational experiences before they left our system and that was very enlightening. Um, they were really concerned about the length of their lunchtimes. So duly noted. Um, but that wa, it was a fun process to kind of teach them about what I do as a board member, what the school board um does and really kind of what what our role is in in the community. I also wanted to give a shout out to Chats Creek Elementary School, who won um best large PTA um for the year and and to all of the hard work that those PTA um, PTA organizations across the district really, thank you for all of your hard work, for taking care of our students and our staff um throughout this school year. Farewell to our retired teachers. Um, thank you for serving us so diligently and that, um you know, we will miss your institutional knowledge, but we wish you a a good next adventure. All of the graduations, um I had the opportunity to attend four graduations um and it was really impactful to sit there on stage, to to have the opportunity to shake the hands of our graduates um and remember that this is like, this is why we're doing this. Um, this is why we um fight hard every day to make sure that our our public education system is there for them um so that they can graduate and become our neighbors and our leaders and um citizens in in Duval County. So that has been very, very fun. Um, I would like to pass on a a my words of wisdom from um the graduation we did at um the Juvenile Detention Center. Um, a young man spoke there, an incarcerated young man. Um, and he said, what comes easy won't last and what lasts won't come easy. Um, so thank you so much, Mr. Hayes, for those wonderful words of wisdom. Um, I do wanna remind everyone that we do have public hearing at city council on the referendum, June eleventh. Um, the dates again for committee are June eighteenth. Um, so I would encourage everyone to please come out and share your stories, share your support. How has Duval County Public Schools impacted your life and why do we need um to make sure that we're taking care of our school facilities? Um, I'll be having a Facebook Live Q and A on Thursday. Um, and so if anybody is interested in in learning more about the frequently asked questions related to the referendum, please feel free to check it out. Um, you can just find me, search me on Facebook. Um, and hopefully that'll help give some people some information. If you don't have the information, um please tune in. Um, that'll be there, of course, as a video. And I think that is it?
Thank you. Do you have a time for your Facebook Live?
Seven thirty.
Okay.
Seven thirty PM.
Board Member Willie?
Yes. Um, I, I too, it's graduation season and I got a chance to attend eight. It's a lot, yeah.
It's a lot.
Let's count them up. And it is, it is always a special moment to see families and students and just uh teachers and staff get to celebrate that accomplishment because everybody doesn't get that opportunity. And it it's just eye opening to see. And uh there was a quote at one of the graduations. One of the speakers, student speaker, said, let your light shine because it gives others the permission to do the same. And I thought that was such a powerful quote and I think sometimes we diminish our light because of other people, but I think it's important to keep our light shining always. Um, also just wanna give uh some special recognition. Um, there was a a number of book fairs that happened by Read USA, partnered with City Year and some other folks and a number of my schools and I think Board Member Jones and across the district, I think thirty plus. And students got to go home with brand new books, like I think three each, to read over the summer. And we often talk about summer slide and reading and I thought that was just a great program, so wanted to give recognition there. Um, and I also just wanna recognize Ms. Barnum and I forget the other young lady's name who came to speak before her, just talking about, just challenging us. And I think I appreciate that because that's why we are here. Uh, we're not here just to check a box and vote for every single thing that comes across. We should be challenged. People should come and and speak their mind and tell us how they feel because that should actually move us and move us to action. And um and trust and believe that when Dr. Green talked about the third grade reading scores in Northwestern and Lake Forest, these are things that we're constantly thinking about and constantly trying to sort of iterate on, how do we get this right? How do we do better by our kids? And I think, um but I also appreciate the push and know that I'm going to to challenge myself and challenge the board and challenge our superintendent to do every single thing that we can to ensure that our kids, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade beyond, whatever grade, to ensure that they have a great education. So I just wanna acknowledge the push and I appreciate the push. And last, uh we we all know that the half a penny sales taxes is upon us. I was at a CPAC meeting last night and I thought it went really well. And why it went well was because we had a dialogue about why this was important. And I tried to center that whole group on why. And the why was our students. Our students are entering into schools every single day, some that if you entered into that facility, you would say, wow, learning happens here. And we often question why we're doing this. And sometimes we get caught up in the back and forth and some of these pieces, but at the end of the day, it's about students having safe schools, schools that are functional, schools that are high quality and have the technology that where they can succeed. So I'm excited about this half a penny and I think folks need um to go to, if they haven't gone to ourduvalschools.org, the website, check it out. There's so many great, great, so much great information there about um questions, about answers, about all of it. And I think if we could just take a pause, actually go there and better educate ourselves on it, I think we'd be in a good place. And to to piggyback on Ms. Anderson, show up. Um, my deal is we need to show up for our kids always and showing up at the city council meeting, showing up at these meetings does that. So I just wanna thank the folks who are at that CPAC. It was the downtown sort of urban core CPAC. Uh, Dr. Krisnar was there as well. And it was just a very engaged group who had really, really great questions to ask, but they also uh really pushed us and believed that the schools, we need to do better by our kids and one way we do that is with our schools. So thank you so much for the time and I'll yield the rest.
Board Member Smith Juarez?
Thank you. Try not to be repetitive. Um, I I will also certainly congratulate all of our graduates who walked across the stage um as well as those soon to be graduates who are still diligently completing um that last credit or um checking that last box of what they need to do in order to earn that diploma. We acknowledge all of your hard work as well and we are looking forward to celebrating your walk across the stage in August um when that graduation happens. Um, I I also wanna acknowledge um City Year and the work that they do in our schools. We're a pretty agreeable board and sometimes we disagree, but we we tend to um do it nicely until somebody started talking about where else City Year might be able to go and then it was a fight. Um, and I say that because I think we have each seen as we have interacted with core members and understood um the partnership of City Year as a true service in saying, where can we go? What can we do? How can we um best be of use to children? Um, to those students that we all show up for every day. Um, and so I just wanna acknowledge their work. I wanna acknowledge the strong partnership that they have had with us over the years that they have been there and um just let them and and all of their core members know that we wanna see it grow when it can. Um, so, um and then uh also to the the half penny sales tax. Um, absolutely, this is about our children who do not have time to wait. They have waited as we commissioned the FCI study in twenty seventeen. They have waited as we commissioned the enrollment study shortly following that. They have waited as those studies got completed. They have waited as we deliberated and had conversation. They have waited um for us to pass the referendum and send it to city council and they do not have time to wait. Um, we know what the need is and all of those things that were done were done deliberately and with the best intention of understanding where are the needs and how can we best serve them? So that when we have the resources, that we know that there will be an equitable distribution, that we know how to prioritize those needs and that we are not simply repairing and replacing. that we know how to prioritize those needs and that we are not simply repairing and replacing what's there, but we are thinking and innovating about what does a learning space look like now that it didn't look like seventy-five, eighty years ago when some of our schools were built? The average age of a school building in Duval County is forty-four years. Nearly half of our schools are over fifty-one years old. And that's not fifty-one years with major renovations every decade. That is fifty-one years. Um, some of them older 'cause that's uh that's average. So, or fifty-one years or more. Um, the half penny would cost the average household six dollars a month. Um, so as we think about this and as we think about the collective investment that Duval County can make in not just our schools, this is an investment in children, in business, in neighborhoods, in community, in how we relate to each other and acknowledge our common purpose and common cause as a city and where we're going in the future. So these buildings, these bricks and sticks are there to advance learning, but they're also there as a testament to who we are as a city, how we've made investments over time when we had the resources and when we could and how we've expanded in areas as there was growth. Um, all of those things were done to the best that we could then. Let's do better now. Um, and so I would encourage um anyone, I'll look forward to um seeing the Millers on the eleventh. Thank you. Um, please um stand alongside them, stand in front of us. You mentioned us leading. It is the public that leads. Um, and so please um lead and we will um support you um and and um your support there. Um, please, if you can't be there on the eleventh, you can um email your city council person, you can call them. Um, you can uh use any means necessary to contact them um and let them know that uh how you feel, but uh that they have the opportunity to let the voters decide who we wanna be, uh not just as a school district, but as a city. Um, thank you.
Board Member Joyce?
I've received a lot of phone calls over the last few days about City Year being taken out of Ed White. It's not a popular decision in the Ed White community and I hate that it has had had to happen. Um, Ed White wasn't the only school, high school to lose City Year. I think Andrew Jackson also um lost their services. And while it's hard because they do provide such valuable um resources to our teachers and our students, um I I wanna just go on record as saying that while I really hate it, I do understand that the superintendent would like to redistribute those resources to some of our elementary schools where you feel like that is um where those resources need to be. And so um I I wanted to address that. Um, graduation season was amazing. Um, I absolutely loved it. I have two stories that I wanna say, I wanna tell you. One of my favorite graduations was the pre-child detention center graduation. I was moved. I wept, I cried. It was beautiful. Um, the guest, the speaker, the keynote speaker at that graduation was absolutely amazing. And what he told those students um that were sitting there getting their diplomas was that he had spent twenty years incarcerated. And while he was incarcerated, he got his master's degree from Boston College. And that master's degree did not say that he received it from Boston College incarcerated. It said he had a master's degree from Boston College. And I just felt like he was really very motivational and it was a wonderful experience for me. The second one was um attending the graduation at Ed White. Thirty years ago this year, I graduated from Ed White High School. Um, and so it was an honor to be able to be there to hand out diplomas. A lot of these students were my students when they were at Joseph Stilwell. But the most meaningful graduation experience by far that I had was when a former Joseph Stilwell student, he's a PI student named Jericho's Jericho Burrows, who has cerebral palsy, got up and walked across the stage to get his diploma. And his mother did not know that was about to happen. It was moving and it was beautiful and it was something that I will never forget. And so my first round of graduations were uh so meaningful and I've written it down in my journal and I'm so grateful to be a part of that. Um, and I wanna say thank you for all of the service, the service to all of our teachers who are retired. Going to the DCPS retirement luncheon was wonderful. Um, some of those teachers were teachers of my students, my kids, my personal, my kids I actually raised. Um, those were some of my uh teachers that I've known for a long time. Um, and s- so thank you for your service. That was wonderful. And then last but not least, I just wanna say, teachers, you have earned it and you deserve it and enjoy your summer vacation. And students, you keep up the good work, I mean, study, read. Read every day for twenty minutes. Don't forget to read every day and enjoy your summer.
Thank you. Board Member Grams, I know you don't ever like to go first, so I was trying to delay that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, well, first I'd like to um to uh tell Board Member um Smith-Wares that I'm very grateful that you didn't, you weren't there for your schools um because I got to go instead. So.
I'm grateful for that.
I appreciate that.
Not that I wasn't there, but that you went.
Yeah, right, right, right. 'Cause I, it's hard because I only have one high school. So unless somebody gives me other high schools, you know, I'm like, don't do it. Um, of course, Sanderwood, um, you know, it was over six hundred kids, so. But it was a, it was a very um, eh, and th- this is the best part of what we do. Um, it 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 just was, was wonderful. Um, and I also went to Inglewood, which also is is um was a wonders- wonderful. And the superintendent uh talked about how the kids actually do the, do the, it's no more that you have to bring in some boring speech for some time. But the kids do such a great job. And um I really, probably the person I think that, besides the principal, because I know it must be very um a little nervous, uh but the person who actually has to put it all together, um I have to say that that is uh probably the one person that I can, 'cause I I'm sure that there are, there's always something that's going wrong, but um I did enjoy that. Um, also the retired uh the teachers and staff that are retired, um that's always, and in some ways, they they say, but I love what I do, I love what I do and and that really makes a difference. And and um so I was very happy to be at that particular um occasion. And um of course, the PTA, um that's my roots. The PTA is my roots. And so I am so pleased that we have um for the district, a really good um PTA and do wonderful things for kids. Um, and I just wanna say thank you to our chair and to our superintendent. I know and and I have to say um Mr. Jones too. Um, but I know y'all have, this has been a heavy burden for y'all to carry and certainly the rest of us certainly need to to do what we can do to um get where we need to be. And um I think that, oh, that's it.
And you are a lifetime member of the PTA. I believe you received that award.
I don't know what that gets me, but I, I mean.
Vice Chair Jones?
Get you a seat on the Duval County School Board. Uh, I think I attended six graduations. Uh, the one at Palm Avenue is always special. I try to make sure I make that one. And all four of my high schools had over ninety percent graduation rate and I think that's to be commended. I challenged uh Mr. Turner at Paxton 'cause he had ninety-nine percent last year. He pulled my arm and said, we got a hundred this year. So Paxton graduated a hundred percent of their students and that's always good. I think we're on the right track in that respect. Uh, attended uh several fifth and eighth grade awards ceremonies. I think those, that five percenters are gonna be outstanding students in the future and outstanding leaders for our community. And also wanna extend my congratulations to all those retiring DCPS employees. They were very happy and hopefully they won't stay away too long. They'll come back in some capacity and help us out 'cause we need that 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 knowledge that they have. Um, we, we have a challenge in making sure that this committee and this community move forward with uh half penny sales tax. We need to get it on the ballot. It's gonna take all of us working together to do it. Um, I think we have a very good story to tell. I think it's compelling. I think when people look at the condition of our schools, they realize that we need to do something. And the half penny sales tax is the best option we have available. And I think on the June eleventh and June the eighteenth at those council meeting and following committee meetings, we need to be present. We need to start talking with our council members now. Uh, some are saying, well, I don't know what the plan is. We need to let them know what the plan is. We need to let the public know what the plan is. And we need to be clear in our efforts to get it on the ballot. That's important. Uh, nothing can happen in spite of all our goodwill. Nothing can happen until we get it on the ballot and give the voters an opportunity to vote. And that's all we're asking. Give the voters an opportunity to vote and get involved. Five o'clock on June eleventh, we need to be there. Uh, nine thirty at the finance committee on the eighteenth and two o'clock on the eighteenth, we need to be there at the finance meeting to let them know that we're concerned. And it's not about us, it's not about the superintendent, uh it's not about the school board, it's about our children and giving them a good environment to learn. Excellent facilities and that im- improves academic success. And we know it's important, but we also got to communicate that very effectively to our city council members who have to make that decision to put it on the ballot. So I just wanna encourage us to be there in force on the eleventh and the eighteenth. And uh thank you very much, Madam Chairman, for all you've done, all the meetings you've had, all the hands you've had to shake and meeting with the mayor, you and the superintendent, the mayor, the council president and all those leaders in the community to try to make sure that we can get this on the ballot. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. So I didn't know I had a principal retiring until Dr. Green leaned over to me at the um celebration for retirement since she told me. And I said, did you make her mad? That was my, and she said, no. And so um Principal Sneddon, who is the principal at Greenland Pines, did retire this year. Uh, she's been there a long time and certainly made a difference for students in District Seven and we appreciate her leadership. Graduation is always one of my favorite times of the year. I think every time, I can just listen to that graduation march over and over and over. Um, I did have the opportunity to attend Douglas Anderson's graduation. They too had a hundred percent graduation. And can I just say they had twenty million dollars in scholarships? I attended a few other ones, but no one reached that high. There was, there was, um, I believe it was Atlantic Coast that was twelve million, but Douglas Anderson's was the most impressive and I just share that. And I know that um as their board representative, you're proud to to hear that. Uh, so, uh but graduation ceremonies are always a fun time. It's been a busy month. And I am certain that as we continue the conversation with the community regarding our s- our needs with facilities uh and our intent to make a difference for children and to provide a better future for public education in our community, that as people learn more uh and become more engaged and join the conversation uh that at the time uh that the referendum is voted upon, it will pass and it will be a new day in Duval County for our schools. So having said that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
It was moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Willie. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Oh, is that what that was?
No, no one.